All right, Finance and Law Subcommittee will come to order. First, the call of the roll, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
And Mr. Fiore is present. First item on the agenda is the audit of the student activities accounts from Hag and Sahadi accountants. And I notice there are a number of findings there which I think really need to be referred to this Rules Committee because it looks like there are a number of policies and regulations that they're recommending we adopt.
I would propose a motion that we send this to the Rules Committee.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
No need to discuss at this time, so we'll discuss in the Rules, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think that probably best because it looks like there are several we ought to come up with.
Sure.
May need a couple of sessions of Rules too, for that matter.
No further discussion.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Then we have two bills payable warrants, one for fiscal 22 in the amount of $36,326.32 and one for fiscal 23 in the amount of $736,325.99.
Motion is made to approve FY 22.
Second, in the amount of $36,326.32.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. And fiscal 23, I am going to need to be recorded as present because there is an item on the warrant for paying Old Colony History Museum.
Motion to approve the FY 23 warrant for $736,325.99. With counsel of counsel. School Board Member Fiore voting, what was it again?
Present on the item dealing with the Old Colony History Museum.
So voted.
I'll second that, but you may need to amend your motion, Mr. Enos, because I'd like to be recorded as voting present on page 14, the amount of $1998, and that is the voucher number 19565.
Out of the motion.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're out of here.
Good evening, everyone, and I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare And the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan, if you'd lead us in invocation in moments of silence.
Yeah. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Charles A. Callahan, Sr., who passed away on January 22nd, 2023, at Morton Hospital. He was 89 years old. He was born in Brockton and was employed with Liberty Mutual Industries and AM International as an award-winning salesman. He also started his own real estate company, and he proudly served this country with the Air Force during 1951 to 55, serving in Alaska as a radar technician during the Korean War. His wife predeceased him, but he survived by three loving children, including Mr. Chuck Callahan, who is a seventh-grade teacher at Morton School, and several grandchildren, including Tara Rice, who is a teacher at Friedman, Friedman Middle. So we ask for your thoughts and prayers for Mr. Callahan. Moment of silence, please. Thank you, and please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you very much.
And roll call. Roll call, please, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Vera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Chairman DeMello.
Present.
Dr. DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present, thank you. Could I get a motion for approval of the minutes of February 1st, 2023?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted. Chair, Mr. Chairman, public input?
Thank you. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation guidelines will be provided upon sign-up, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register, and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Mrs. Devine, do we have any public input tonight?
There is no public input this evening.
No public input, Mayor?
Thank you. So moving on to E., we have a presentation on changes to Mass. General Law, Chapter Superintendent Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this evening, you are going to hear a presentation from our Director of Student Services and Transportation, Stephanie Hoy. And Stephanie is new in her role with Central Office overseeing all student services and transportation, but she also has a wealth of experience as an elementary principal and elementary school principal at East Tonon Elementary School. Many of you have had conversations with me regarding the changes to Massachusetts General Law 71, comma, 37h and 3/4. So Mrs. Hoy, when she does her presentation, she will do her best to really debunk a lot of the myths and misperceptions that are out there regarding the changes to this discipline law and not to be confused with 37h and 1/2, which has to do with felonies. So there are two distinct laws, and again, I'll let Mrs. Hoy frame the conversation because I feel this is very important for us as a school board and also members of the community to understand now what is the role of schools in terms of disciplining our students and what offenses or what circumstances would warrant an out-of-school suspension and what are some of the alternative practices that we currently have here in the Tonon Public Schools, as well as new practices that we are exploring in looking to implement in our school system. And again, as we learn to live and implement the new law with its impact on our student bodies, staff, and administrators. So with that being said, Mrs. Hoy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Thank you to everyone for allowing me to come here tonight and discuss the new changes to our 37h and 3/4 law. As Mr. Cabral said, 37h and 3/4 is the only changes I'll be discussing with you tonight because the law only applies to 37h and 3/4, which is primarily the classification that we use mostly when it comes to discipline within our Tonon Public School System and most school systems. As Mr. Cabral alluded to, there are three classifications for discipline. One is 37h and 3/4, which you'll hear from me tonight. The other is 37h, which is largely around weapons, drugs, and assault on staff and students. And the third would be 37h and 1/2, which is for felony. So today, for the purpose of today's conversation, we are only looking at the changes in 37h and 3/4. So I put it together of this PowerPoint, and I have to give credit where credit is due. The PowerPoint actually comes from Attorney Catherine Lyons, who's our attorney for all issues with student services. She had the opportunity, right before this law came into effect on November 8th, to sit down with our principals via Zoom and go over the entire process and the changes and the differences. She recently did a similar presentation for all our assistant principals as well so that all our administrators within the district are well-informed around the law and what our responsibilities are as administrators. So before I get into the PowerPoint, I thought maybe I could frame my conversation for you because the PowerPoint is very official because it was done by an attorney, and I am not an attorney, so I would be happy to just summarize a little bit about those changes are so that we can discuss them further if you have any questions. So as you all know, I was a principal at East Tonon for eight years, and I have to say, I feel like even though this law is very new right now, implemented on November 8th, it is not new to the administrators in this city. I am proud to say that I believe that all of the administrators in this city, when we look at discipline, we look at all alternatives before we discipline because we know that we discipline because we want to see change in behavior. That is why you discipline, just like as a parent at home, we discipline because we want our children to understand that perhaps there is another alternative to their behavior, and we are giving them the level of consequence of discipline in hopes that the next time they're in a situation like that, they make a different choice. Sometimes suspension unfortunately does not change behavior, but inadvertently reinforces the behavior that they're suspended for. So I think as administrators, we have acknowledged that throughout our district in conversations that we've had with one another or even professional development opportunities that we've had. And we've done a really nice job at coming together and discussing what can we do before we get to the point of suspension? Because as you all know, suspension also equals not being in the classroom, not learning, and not doing well academically. And we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and our first responsibility is to all our students to make sure they are learning, they're in our classroom. So the biggest change that we see in 37h and 3/4 really is that the principals or the designee are now asked, instead of going ahead and suspending a child perhaps immediately, they're looking at alternative remedies. And I'll go into what that looks like a little bit later into the presentation, but alternative remedies, and thanks to School Committee for allowing us to hire more school adjustment counselors and more guidance counselors within our district, the alternative remedies that we have discussed are a little bit more feasible because we've had the opportunity to hire more staff. You'll later hear me talk a little bit about the importance of documentation of alternative remedies, and I must say again, thank you to School Committee, the importance of hiring more administrators in our buildings, having two assistant principals in most of our buildings at this point also helps us with this new law as the importance of the documentation is something that we also need to demonstrate. So when a child's presented for some level of discipline, there is usually a notice of hearing, and a parent will come in and discuss what occurred. Instead of a principal or designee deciding at that time that based on these actions that they are to be suspended, they look at the different alternative methods that they could recommend based on the actions. These actions are then very well documented, and it's stated in our School Brains platform what the hearing was about, what the discipline was, and what the alternative methods that we might have considered are. That's where that documentation use of alternative remedies and results of the alternative remedies employed comes in. So the law is asking us not only to use the alternative remedies before we suspend, but also document those alternative remedies and also state how successful were those alternative remedies. And I will allude, I'll let you know why that's so important as we go on. So some of these slides were a little redundant, so I'm going to apologize in advance, but hopefully, as I summarize, you'll get the gist of and the understanding of what these slides are. So in the event, again, there is the hearing, parents appear. At this point, the principal or the designee, their main responsibility is to re-engage a student in the learning process. And we all know that by suspending a child, you're not always re-engaging them into the learning process. So they have to look at other ways of re-engaging them into the learning process before we expel, before we suspend, until alternative remedies have not employed their use or results documented. So there are exceptions because there's always an exception to the rule. So it's not that we cannot suspend, and I want to make that very clear, it's that we are asked to look at alternative ways of handling a discipline situation that does not always equal suspension. But if there have been alternative measures that have been implemented in the past and have not yet been successful, and that is well documented, and this is where the documentation becomes very important, that they're not well documented, if they're not well documented, we don't have a great foundation on our next steps. So if the alternative remedies have not been successful, then we can look at suspension. If the behavior that was, is being disciplined, is producing some sort of significant harm to someone in that building, or if they could cause injury, or if there's some level of serious harm that's been done, or we assume might be done based on documented information, we can go ahead and determine a suspension. But again, that documentation's very important because it takes away the subjective piece. So if it's documented that a child may not have accepted an alternative remedy the way we had hoped for, or if it's documented that this particular student has engaged in some level of harm, it may continue to pose that risk, we do have that opportunity to go into suspension. So I do not want anyone to think that this law prevents us to suspend. It does not prevent us to suspend, it just forces us to look a little differently when it comes to levels of discipline. So these are some alternative remedies. You'll notice in another slide that I'm actually going to go into in a little bit, they'll have a few more alternative remedies. So mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, collaboration, problem solving. I must say, most of our administrative recently had the opportunity to attend a professional development that Superintendent Cabral recommended to all of us that was held at South Coast Collaborative regarding restorative practices. They came back with some really good ideas, they were very energized, they actually had wonderful things to say about that particular professional development. Based on that professional development, we'll be starting a group, a learning group, to take a look at some of the practices that we currently have and try to implement different types of practices, not only at each school but district-wide, that assist principals and administrators in their buildings to re-engage students back into the learning process. We're also looking at different types of behavior intervention, and of course, trauma-sensitive learning models, which will be a process for us because it's not something that we can throw together quickly if you want to do it right, it does take time. But we're hoping with eager administrators who have just come off some really great professional development, we'll have that opportunity to get together, share ideas, and of course, implement some processes that would only benefit our students and administrators. So this is just a comparison of the old language versus the new language, and if I could bring to your attention, the language is relatively very similar. The only real difference in the language under old language is that the principal, let me just grab my notes. The principal in the old language, it says, it states, "shall exercise discretion," whereas the new language, "shall consider ways to re-engage." So that discretionary piece has been removed, and now the new language states that "we shall consider ways to re-engage that student in learning." So those are the two major differences. Other than that, the language is identical. Here are some more examples of alternative remedies. I must say, I'm pretty proud to say that most of the alternative remedies that you see on this slide, we do very, very good job at. Again, with the assistance of our school adjustment counselors, our school counselors, our additional assistant principals, and the collaboration that we're able to have, both with the special ed department and with the rest of our leadership crew, I think that we do a great job in trying to consult with our principals and assistant principals so that they are being supported in these areas. I must say, since the law has come into place, I have received many, many phone calls, and decisions that we make are very collaborative. So I don't, I hope that if you were to ask a principal or an assistant principal how they feel, I would hope that they don't feel like they're on an island when it comes to these decisions because I have received many phone calls in regards to, what do you think? Let's talk about it. What are some alternative methods that might pertain to this case? Should this be a case that goes right to suspension? So a lot of the work that we're doing is very collaborative with our principals and assistant principals, given that this is a new law and we're all learning as a year progresses. So I talked a little bit about the importance of documentation of alternative remedies and its importance, and this slide just kind of reiterates this. Now, please keep in mind that, again, this was written by one of our school attorneys, and this is an area that she has talked to both not only myself but also other administrators in the district of the importance of documentation. So one of the reasons I had stated before that we want to make sure we're documenting all disciplinary actions, all referrals to the offices, and so forth, are because we want to demonstrate that we are doing our due diligence for our students, but there are times that we do have to suspend. And I must say, I know I spoke earlier and said that sometimes inadvertently a suspension may reinforce behavior, which I've seen firsthand as a principal that it can, but the best results that we typically have with suspension is when it's a team effort with families and school administrators. So, you know, working on those relationships with families, administrators doing their due diligence by trying to reach families and having these meetings and talking to them, when families and administrators are on the same page, that is when we have the most success. So these are, this is a discussion that, about the exceptions that we already went through. So these are when there are exceptions to the rule. Again, the alternative remedies are unsuitable, or the student continues to present in school with a pose of specific documentable concern about the infliction of serious bodily harm or other serious harm upon another person within the school. Those are the non-negotiables. So you may ask, when an alternative is counterproductive or not suitable? So these give you some examples. Again, when the alternative hasn't worked, when a student refuses to engage in alternative. So you may, a principal may decide, I'm going to have you do some restorative work for me today. You're going to sit down with our school adjustment counselor, you're going to fill out a reflection sheet, and the student may totally refuse, no, I'm not doing that. Or, you know, they give another type of remedial situation, and the student still does not do it. In that time, the principal can actually, at that point, suggest or consider a suspension. When a student's conduct infringes on the civil rights of a student, of course, that's a non-negotiable. When a student's conduct creates a hostile environment for students or staff, when a student's conduct impedes the school's mission statement, those are all reasons why we would consider perhaps suspension, but again, we would still have to go through the process of looking at those alternative remedies for students. I think that's it. So again, although it states that it's new, I don't really feel like the practice and the mindset that follows into this law is new. I feel like we practice this on a daily basis. Now it's just the law, and it's written in its form. I should tell you just a little background, and I don't have a lot of information for it, but this did come from an act addressing barriers to care for mental health, as they decided that there was a lot of stigma that was being placed on students that were being suspended. So that is where this law comes from, from that particular act. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about it, and I'd be welcome to answer certainly any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoy. I have a question, and I know no one here wrote this law, you didn't write this law, but it's a little bit, it seems a little bit contradictory, and I just want to make sure I understand the exceptions, and I also understand the need to work with kids, work with their families, and try to get the best result from alternative methods, but there's exceptions, right? That we just saw. But you still have to look at the alternatives, so does that mean you still have to try the alternatives?
No.
Okay.
So a part of that process would be that a principal would take a look at why they're coming, the student's coming in front of for discipline, and then that, look at any documentation that is provided to them to determine whether or not this is, fits one of those exceptions. During that process, I think it's only natural for a principal to think, well, would this work instead of this? And I think that that's just a natural process, being a school leader and a school administrator, but they do not need to at that point. If it falls between those two exceptions, they do not need to implement any type of alternative measures.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Hoy, for the presentation. My question is, the documentation that you keep accumulating on this particular student, who has access to that file? Do the parents have access to the file?
No, so that's in our student information system, that would be in School Brains. So our administrators, school counselors, certainly a parent always has the right to ask for records, so we would obviously follow a parent's, if a parent asked for the records, we certainly would give the parent their records, but they don't have access to it immediately without the request.
Okay, maybe I asked it incorrectly. So they do have the ability to view the culmination of documents that built up on the particular student?
Upon request.
Upon request. It's not one of those requests that you have to wait 30 days or write to the Library of Congress and get it out of archives?
There are some guidelines for timing for us, obviously, to make sure we give it to them in a timely fashion.
Because a suspension would normally happen pretty quickly if something happened, and they would have access to those records almost immediately if necessary?
Yes, and actually, yes. So if it's, if they're requesting records because of a hearing, they have access to those records right then and there. They would have to have somebody with them while they look at those records. I'm sorry, I thought you meant just in general.
Yeah, no, I don't mean.
But if it's based on a discipline situation and they're coming in for a hearing, parents do have the right to review the records.
Wonderful, thank you. Nothing further.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. That made me think of one more question on the documentation. It sounds like, you know, obviously, a lot of work on your part, but there's a reason for it, and it'll serve a good purpose. What, do you also, or are you required, or will you produce statistics to show certain things? And I don't know what all of those things would be, but for instance, would it be, you know, we have students A through X, and they're all different students, you know, student A, we tried restorative justice three times, didn't work, we tried this three times, didn't work, without identifying the students, and then, you know, finally we got to this step. So does it, is it that specific in the statistics, or what would those look like?
So we document, we have to document it very specifically. We're still kind of in that area, we're looking at different options, and I'm going to have Mr. Cabral answer that just a little bit because he and I have been talking about different data opportunities and databases to help us collect that information.
So if I understand your question correctly, Madam Mayor, and what I've heard, and what we've discussed during our urban superintendents meetings, and Commissioner O'Reilly was actually a guest speaker on this matter, is that the need, having systems in place, whether it's our student information system, and then also having systems in place to extrapolate the data, because what this, what this new law is going to require is that, one, Because what this new law is going to require is that, one, we be able to produce the statistics that you are referencing, the number of suspensions, office referrals. And they even asking us to go further, to analyze trends. Are there certain days, based on the data that we're seeing on student referrals? Are there certain times of the day where we're seeing an uptick in student suspensions and student referrals? And then they're going to push back on school systems. What measures are you putting in place to try to address those pockets or those days where you're seeing upticks in these referrals or in student suspensions? In addition, the state is going to require us to submit this data. And I believe this data will become part of their record on their website. So any entity, any family, any member of the community can access this information as it will be on the website. So again, there's a lot of documentation. And we're working now to create something called a dashboard where we can get a snapshot of a student and see all the strategies that we have tried with a particular student or strategies that we've tried with a particular class or particular grade, depending on the level of referrals that we're seeing. And so having an information system that can capture all this data and then having a system that can extrapolate all this data is going to be very important moving forward because of this law.
Okay. And so that's something you're working on currently to?
We're in the process of finalizing the dashboard piece. And our student information system already houses all our student information.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
I have a question. Some of the behaviors of some of our students, and what horrifies me is some of it's happening in elementary schools with violence and things like that. How long are you going to put up with that before you do something about it? Because I received a phone call, I'm not going to mention the school or anything, but the student had even resorted to throwing chairs. And my concern with things like that is somebody's going to get really hurt. And how long can you let that kind of behavior go on with this lovely assortment of all the things you're supposed to try if that doesn't work?
I can start to address that and then Principal, sorry, Director Hoy.
Yeah, I would like somebody to address it, Mr. Cabral.
I'd be happy to, Mrs. Fagan, because there are exceptions, as Mrs. Hoy mentioned. There are exceptions. So if there is a threat to individuals in the building in a classroom, then the principal has that right to suspend the student. So suspension is still a tool. So I think, I don't, I want to reiterate to everyone at this table and everyone at home who's watching. So part of that toolkit, when it comes to managing difficult disruptive student behaviors, suspension is still a tool, but it's not the first tool. So if a student is behaving in a manner which you described, Mrs. Fagan, and it's causing harm to other students, to staff, and potentially to themselves, then removal from that space, that is justified and that is warranted under the law. But it doesn't mean that we cannot look to other forms of suspension or discipline. When I think about this law, I think back to, and I was very guilty of this as an administrator because this is what we did back then and in some cases, we still practice this now. So John Cabral's referred to the office and given a detention for chewing gum. John Cabral's assigned the detention. John Cabral skips the detention. That detention now becomes two detentions. But I still skip the detentions. That detention becomes a Saturday detention. I skip the Saturday detention. My gum chewing now has become a suspension. That's what this law is kind of, is pretty much aiming to do, is to address those low-level behaviors that, when they pile up, become a suspension. But if someone is a threat, or if someone is of harm to individuals in a classroom or school, the principal has, within their authority, to suspend the student. But again, we are still looking at alternative practices, just like we do in the workforce, just like they do with athletics, just like, I don't want to mention the other one. But we know that in other places, there are alternatives. And we want to make sure that we are not just punishing kids blindly for offenses that could be addressed with alternatives.
I understand that, but when the level of violence ratchets up to, you're hitting other students, you know, with your own hands hitting them, and then you're throwing things. That to me is, that's a far cry from gum chewing. But I understand where you're going with this. But I just, I'm worried about how much of that can you really tolerate without being worried about other kids? Because I would hate to be the parent that gets a phone call that, you know, kid got hit in the head and split their head open because somebody threw a chair at him or something like that. That's the kind of thing I'm concerned about. I don't want so much, you have to do this, 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 and this when. And there are some kids that are like that, unfortunately, it's sad. But there are some that really do misbehave. So that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Viera?
So when you evaluate the degree of the severity of the wrongful act, the first thing you probably consider is, is it a thirty-seven and a half age? Thirty-seven age or thirty-seven and three quarters? I mean, is that accurate to say?
So it really depends on the behavior. You're not going to see it, you're not going to really see a thirty-seven age or thirty-seven and a half, obviously, any younger than the high school.
Sure, but that's probably the first thing you consider. So if it's criminal in nature, then it probably goes right to an expulsion. All right. Because if I didn't know about those until your presentation, it's a little confusing.
So there are three categories, depending on the behavior that's being presented. And this is only for thirty-seven age and three quarters. Although it is, as I stated, the majority of our suspensions. There are still the thirty-seven age and thirty-seven and a half that continues, the law reads exactly how it always has read. And yes, if you're, you know, at the high school level and you have a behavior that comes in, that behavior will dictate what category that falls into.
On page three, the alternative remedies mediation, conflict resolution. Are those just with teachers, staff, and parents? Or like, do we have any peer, like at the high school level? Do the students get involved? Do we have?
So at the high school level, I was happy to hear that I think they are exploring some options. I think Superintendent Cabral had a conversation recently. Would you like to share that conversation, Superintendent Cabral?
Yeah, so about a week or two ago, I had a meeting with Principal Holcomb. And he mentions, he discussed the possibility of peer mediation coming back. And I know when I was a middle school principal years ago, the middle schools did have peer mediators that were trained by the high school peer mediators. So if that's something that's successful at the high school and the students receive the level of training where we can have them come down to the middle school level and provide that training, that would be a good alternative that we could put in place.
And then my last question, restorative justice. I've heard examples, but can you give me, like it's a word I hear all the time and I know we use it. And I know the superintendent and I have talked about specific examples that pertain to my son, actually, which I'm okay saying. But can you give me an example?
Sure. So let me, can I offer you at the elementary level? It's just an area that I'm a little more comfortable with.
Sure.
So if a student comes in and let's say they have been unkind to another student in a way that might have been pushing outside at recess or tripping at recess, those types of things. They, a student would come in, talk to the principal, talk about the situation. We would put some conflict resolution in. And then there would probably be some level of reflection. And that reflection would either be done with the principal, the assistant principal, sometimes it's the school's counselor. So the principal's designee. And you go over the process. Some of the forms that we use are very structured. So it allows students, kind of like sentence starters and the assistants to help. And it really is an opportunity for them to there to sit down, reflect on what they did, and then come up with an alternative measure to what it is that they need to do to repair what happened out at recess. So children are very much sometimes into that conversation. They're part of that solution. So I could say that it may be that that child now invites this other child to play with them. And perhaps that's kind of under the supervision of one of our counselors or our lunch and recess assistants outside that's a little more structured. Or perhaps it's a mediation with the school counselor, a school adjustment counselor, and a conversation of what just happened, what instigated that behavior? And then working out and talking to one another about how things could have been done differently. Or in a letter of apology. So there's a lot of different options there. And I do think that that term is used just as much as restorative practices, which are very similar. But does that help a little bit with that example?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. George?
Yes, I have a few things. Thank you for your presentation as well. For school brains, I was wondering, does it have a capacity to add those four categories of like mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice? So when you're looking at the data, you can kind of just pull it out of the system?
You mean as a, because right, think of?
Like as a dropdown?
I don't know school brains well enough on the discipline piece, potentially, Mrs. Hoy.
Yeah, not yet. But Carolyn Bleno, Director of Technology, and I, and some of the assistant principals, primarily at the high school, have been talking a little bit about adding more to school brains so that we can actually just click on the box. And these are the restorative measures. Because right now, they have to write it in description mode, which?
That makes it harder to document everything.
Exactly. So there's been discussions on how we can adapt that a little bit. So one, it would be a simpler form of documentation, but also perhaps a better way of collecting data when you run reports as opposed to a narrative or a description that's very difficult to run any type of data points on. So that, those are conversations in play now.
Yeah. The school system I was in, previously at X2, and you could kind of just add things. So that was very helpful, that you could kind of just put that dropped in as a VP and constantly put in conducts. That was very helpful. So hopefully, we're able to do that. My other question is, do we have in-school suspension? So I know like suspension is our last option. But I think in-school suspension is a good first option before out-of-school suspension because a lot of times, kids get sent home for a vacation. Now they're home, hanging out, their parents still have to go to work or parents have to take work off, so now they have to stay home. And I just see that as a better option. I was just wondering if we have accessibility for that? Or is that something that maybe we can talk about as a group?
I must say, as a former principal, the in-school, in my opinion, probably works best. Because you can make sure that, you know, there's accountability for work performance. But there's also the ability to do some restorative practices during the school day. So it's kind of a win-win. We don't have a formalized in-school suspension process right now. But I do know that a lot of our principals are doing in-school suspensions right now based on this new law as an alternative. It'll be something I'm sure we'll be discussing as a district more moving forward. But it's definitely one of the better alternatives to the out-of-school suspensions.
Thank you for that. And then another piece was, I know you said they don't have to go through all the alternatives, but just, I personally would recommend that. I think that's best practices that they try their best to. Because then we get into that piece of equity and like which kids are being sent to the office and getting referrals and which kids are getting suspended or in trouble for certain behaviors versus others. And I think that that can get really iffy if we don't kind of go through those best practices. And what Mrs. Fagan was saying, I completely understand your piece with like, you know, students go to school. I have kids as well. I don't send them to school to get hit in class or hit with a chair. But I also work in a school and realistic. And I see all the dynamics that kids have to deal with, you know, every kid within the school. And I guess it's just, it's our job to make sure that we educate every student, even if the ones that don't maybe behave the best in the class. And I think that's where like the restorative justice and having really good relationships with these students and their families to kind of work together to curb those behaviors. I know personally, I've had kids in kindergarten and first grade that would hurt kids, hurt teachers, I'd have to restrain them. And now I'm currently working with same kids in fifth grade, whole different kid. So if we were to like, you know, take that kid out of the school or put them in a different placement, you might not have saw that same change. So like, as difficult it is for the families that are going through that as well, we still have like the obligation to make sure that we help all students. But that's just my experience with it. And thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. George. Okay. Nothing further? I'm sorry? Oh, sure.
I thought we were done with these things. So I just, Mr. George's point, that's why the collection of the data and having access to dashboards where we can, you know, analyze the data and really make informed decisions to really try to address behaviors. So that's why we're going to continue to work hard to making sure that our information system and that we have the ability to really get a clear snapshot of our students through the incorporation of a dashboard. So when I was in Mrs. Moynihan's role as Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operation, I would always attend Chapter 70 workshops. And the presenter would always start the workshop by saying, at the end of the workshop, this presentation isn't going to be clear, but it's going to be clearer. So I'm hopeful that this presentation on the new discipline law, you know, it may not have cleared everything up for you, but maybe some of those questions or some of those concerns you had have been clarified or become a little clearer and you have a better understanding on how we're trying to utilize and how we're trying to best support all our kids. But again, suspension is still a tool. I want the public and I want the school board to be aware, suspension is still a tool. But we're going to do our very best to work with all our students and our caregivers to give all our students the help and the support that they need. But if a suspension is needed, the student will be suspended, unfortunately.
If I could go back to Dr. DeMello, one of his questions, just to add to it, if that's okay. You had asked about parents reviewing records. So not only is that the right of a parent on the hearing letter, all the parents' rights are listed on the hearing letter, and that's one of a few. Just so for your own knowledge. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hoy.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, you have three updates and two talking points. So the first update, please join me congratulating Benjamin A. Freeman Middle School Principal Danielle Kurt. She has been appointed to the Director of Humanities for the Taunton Public School. Principal Kurt is a longtime Taunton resident, and she will begin her new position effective July 1st, 2023. In her newly appointed role, Principal Kurt will oversee the piloting and adoption of curriculum in the area of humanities throughout the Taunton Public School District. In addition, she will also play a vital role in the assessment and development of curriculum and instructional programming for the Humanities Department and will serve as a member of the school system's district's instructional leadership team. So I'm very happy to make this announcement. Danielle has been an outstanding principal during her time at the Freeman Middle School. She's also served as an assistant principal. She's also held several teaching positions, various teaching positions in the Taunton Public Schools. And she's also taught at the college level. So at a future date, I will have Principal Kurt here to meet you when she's officially serving in a new capacity as a Director of Humanities. Next, I just would like to provide you with an update. So last week, the high school advisory had a wonderful presentation from Principal Delaney on all the hard work and all the great work taking place and how it's benefiting the students at the alternative high school. So here in Taunton, we like to make sure that we kind of take that one-stop-shopping approach. So one of the things that we are exploring, and if it does get approved at the state level, we will have to bring it before the committee for your approval. So we are exploring a virtual school. So the virtual school application must be submitted. I believe it's sometime in April that we have to submit the application. And when the application is submitted, we will hear shortly from the state on whether or not we have been approved. And then I will bring it before the full board for a presentation where you can ask questions and you can, you know, have your questions answered. And based on a survey that was conducted through all our caregivers, I think we received close to 800 responses. The greatest response from caregivers interested in the virtual school or having their child attend a virtual school were in grades eight through 12. So our application will be for students eight through 12. We're looking at approximately 60 students to start, but possibly more once we conduct our second survey. And we believe this will just be another good practice, similar to the alternative high school, for students who need a different structure, a little more support, and parents who, again, maybe need to have their child in a different setting. So I will continue to keep the committee informed as we progress with the application. And at a future date, you will have a more formal presentation regarding the Taunton Public Schools virtual school application. And then next, I want to share with you a highlight where we were awarded a $90,000 grant by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for our implementation of high-quality instructional materials. So to help with the implementation of the high-quality instructional materials, we received a $90,000 funding grant where we can work with a curriculum lead who will work with our DILT, our District Instructional Leadership Team, to ensure that the curriculums that we have in place are being implemented with fidelity. With this grant, we plan to focus on ELA, which will be Wonders in Study Sync. So we currently use Looney Math to help support the implementation of our math program, illustrative math. So with this grant, we will focus on Wonders in Study Sync, which is an elementary, middle, and high school ELA curriculum. And then last but not least, just two quick notes. I probably won't do this piece justice. But part of our work with the state, when I took over as superintendent, we had four schools that were identified in the bottom 10% of the state. Currently, we have two that we have been able to remove in my five years as superintendent with a little pandemic in the middle. So we've done some really good work here in the Taunton Public Schools to be able to remove two schools. And we have two schools. And I believe in the near future, we'll have zero schools in the bottom 10%. So part of the work is, one of the associate commissioners comes So part of the work is, one of the associate commissioners comes down to Taunton, spends some time with me, and we get to visit a school. And the school that I had the Associate Commissioner, Shami Curry, visit was the Martin Middle School, which the Martin Middle School has a new principal. They're still in the bottom 10%. And I have to say that she was literally blown away by what she saw when she walked into the building. So I just want to thank the Associate Commissioner for visiting our school, and I also want to thank Principal Jamie Pereira and her staff at Martin School for all their hard work. What really impressed me was when the Associate Commissioner asked the teachers questions, asked the student questions, what are you learning? Why are you learning? What standard are you addressing? It just came a second nature. So the students and the staff, and this is also a, and this is also a testament to the hard work of our curriculum leaders, and we have many of them. Now, we're really doing the heavy lifting, and we're starting to see the impact in our classrooms. And our goal is to have zero schools in the bottom 10% in the Taunton Public Schools. And then last but not least, this is Mrs. Moynihan's Christmas. On Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, the governor will release the H, the House One budget. So we will know what our Chapter 70 figures look like, and then we can start the process of meeting with you all to discuss fiscal '24. So on March 1st, 2023, the governor will release their budget, and we'll know what fiscal '24 will look like. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up on the agenda, we have Administrative Business Staffing Report. Superintendent, is that you?
So you have the staffing report that Administrative Assistant Judy Moniz presents, and then you also have the staffing report that the HR department has provided. So currently, if you look on the back, I believe we are down. We have 11 vacancies, 11 open vacancies in the Taunton Public Schools. We did have a recent resignation in the Taunton High School Culinary Art Department, and we also did have a resignation of a teacher in the TLC program at the Chamberlain Elementary School. So I believe the prior report, we had 13 vacancies. We're down to 11. And we'll, again, we'll continue to work to fill all these positions. And if you visit our schools, you will start to see posters and billboards stating that we have our job fair coming up, I believe on March 6th?
16th.
16th, thank you. So, and I did notice when I was driving through the green this morning that that is being advertised on the digital board on the green. So if anyone's interested in working with Taunton Public Schools, or if anyone knows anyone who may be interested in working for the Taunton Public Schools, please consider attending the job fair on March 16th.
Thank you, Superintendent. Wish of the committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools Teacher Vagancy Update, which we just basically covered.
Yep.
So that's part of the first one. Next up, we have a field trip request. In your packet, we have a request for the visit to New York City on March 31st, to the Visual Arts, sponsored by the Visual Arts, and it looks like an exciting field trip. And everything seems to be in order, chaperones and their day-by-day itinerary. So what are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second? Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And we also have one that's part of our packet but didn't make it. We have a DECA State Competition is taking place. That will be a two-night affair in the city of Boston, March 9th to the 11th. Looks like we have quite a bit of participants on this one, too. And everything appears to be in order. What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Item 4, REEDS Collaborative Agreement Amendment. It's also in your packet.
This is more of a formality, because as I serve as a board member on REEDS, and there've been some changes made to the Regional Educational Assessment and Diagnostic Services Collaborative Agreement. And one of the steps is to have the school boards that are made that represent the collaborative vote before it's submitted to the state. And if the committee authorizes or votes to adopt the changes and authorizes Chairman DeMello to sign, I would be thankful, and I will bring this information back as we have a board meeting tomorrow.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Next up, H Subcommittee Reports. We'll start out with Chairman Fiori, Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Law Committee met the seating with myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. Enos. We received a Student Activity Account Audit from Haig and Sahadi, our auditors, and very extensive recommendations with regard to implementation of certain rules and regulations. And so the audit report was referred to the Rules Committee for meetings to put in those regulations. Then we had two bills payable warrants, one for fiscal year '22 in the amount of $36,326.32, and one for fiscal '23 in the amount of $736,325.99. The fiscal '22, there's a unanimous recommendation of approval. With regard to fiscal '23, I needed to be recorded as present on a invoice from Old Colony History Museum. And Dr. DeMello requested to be recorded present on the invoice of gilfoil. And those were approved with those abstentions.
What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
All, second for Mr. George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Chairman Fiori. Next up, we have the High School Subcommittee, Chairman Pawlowski.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. On February 8th, 2023, the High School Subcommittee met in four separate instances over the course of the evening. We began at Taunton High School in Tiger Den with the THS Advisory Committee. So the group of students, Drew, Natalie, Mia, Tiffany, Elena, David, they brought to the committee concerns, things that they thought were going well, things that they were, thought were going not so well. All the notes were taken by the administration, and THS will be addressing those concerns in the coming weeks and months. The, that first portion of the meeting adjourned, and then we re-adjourned with the THS Administration. We went through the Improvement Plan for Taunton High School. After that meeting adjourned, we drove across town to the Taunton Alternative High School, where we began the portion of the Advisory Council for Taunton Alternative High School. Same situation there. We had two members of the Advisory Council. They told us about how things are going on at Taunton Alternative High School, addressed some concerns. Notes were taken. So again, the administration will address the concerns as is appropriate. We adjourned and then began the final portion of the meeting, which was the School Improvement Plan for Taunton Alternative High School. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Pawlowski. If I may add, I and a few other members were at both of those meetings, and it's a, it's a different perspective when we have an opportunity to sit down with the students. And it makes our job, how should I say, easier, I think, when you understand the student perspective. So it was a great two meetings that we had that night. What are the wishes of the committee, please?
Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up is Committee the Whole. We have two meetings that took place, February 6th and February 13th. I chair, I was chairing the meetings, right? So on the February 6th meeting, we had the elementary budget priorities from the principals. And it's, it was a common theme of principals wanting to better assist students in the classroom with their needs and wants, and our educators also. So it was a very robust meeting from the elementary part of the system, but it was a common theme of what was necessary to educate these kids and making sure that we as a committee supply that to them in the upcoming fiscal year budget. On February 13th, we met with the High School Subcommittee, which included the middle schools and the two high schools that Mr. Pawlowski just mentioned. And again, kind of the same needs and wants, a little bit more depth regarding some equipment, technology needs. Some of the schools are not equipped with technology that the newer schools have. So we've looked at that, and we will discuss that in our budget hearings coming up soon. But again, you know, you can see the sincerity from our principals of wanting to make sure that every child is educated without missing a beat. And those educators also need the assistance. So it was very, very great two meetings, and thank all of them for coming before us. Superintendent Cabral?
The other theme that you omitted, Dr. DeMello, and I think you and the school board deserve some credit for is that many of our principals started by saying it's a bare-bones budget because they have received so much new curriculum and supplies in the past, and staffing requests have been net, because this, this committee has met with them, has heard them, and we've done the hard work to make sure that they have, that their students and their staff have what they have to teach our kids successfully. So kudos to all of you.
Thank you, Superintendent. What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to accept the report.
Second?
That will be for both reports, February 6th and February 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have New Business, City of Taunton Solar Opportunity Presentation. Superintendent Cabral, could you elaborate a bit more about this, please?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. So we were contacted, my office was contacted, and as well as Assistant Superintendent Moynihan, we were contacted by a representative from the city of Taunton to, to share a proposal with the school committee, if it is your desire, your interest, to hear a proposal by the city, and I believe its vendor, to explore a solar project involving or impacting our schools. So if that is something that the committee wishes to hear, I believe the tentative date is March 15th. I would be happy to contact the official on the city side and say, go ahead, and let's schedule the presentation. It would also be helpful for me to know, if you do want to hear this presentation, what information would you like to know prior to the meeting? Which you don't have to tell me now, you can tell me offline, and we can work with the city to make sure that your questions are answered prior to the meeting, as well as hearing the presentation. So I need to know if this is something that you wish to explore, at least learn about with regard to the city and how it would impact our schools and the school department.
Could I ask that you extend it to the, a week after that, or whatever, two weeks after it? Only because I'm not going to be around on that date.
Mr. Enos, I can speak to that. It was scheduled for the 1st, and tonight, the mayor asked if we could put on the 15th. So we can definitely ask if they're available for the 22nd? Wouldn't it be the 22nd? It would be April.
Two weeks later.
Yeah.
Two weeks later would be the 29th?
I'm okay with that, but I just won't be here on the-
The 29th is in August, Wednesday. On April 5th is the 1st. So the 29th is in August, Wednesday.
Is it going to be voted on that night, or?
I don't, I don't think, my request would be-
I know what the presentation is.
Right, and that's, that's my point. I'd like to see the presentation in advance before we have a discussion about it. And I don't think we're prepared to vote that night.
Okay, then I'm okay, then you can go ahead with the-
The 15th, okay. So to my members, would be the 15th of March 23, if we would like to invite our counterparts from the other part of the city, not counterparts, colleagues. Counterparts, colleagues, what, I don't know, what's the, anyway. What are the wishes of the committee? Let's just invite them. How's that? What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to invite the city of Taunton to present on solar opportunities?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So Superintendent Cabral, March 15th?
And again, if you have any information that you'd like to see or any questions prior, please send them my way, and hopefully they can be answered during the presentation.
Yeah, I think just the presentation itself, not the day of, not the night before, you know, the sooner the better. I really appreciate it. I mean, the reason I mention that, we've had a dog and pony show here before, a couple of years ago, and it was a waste of our time, and it would have been a waste of city resources, so I want to make sure we avoid that.
I would agree with that, Dr. DeMello. What I will say is the city on our side has gone ahead with a solar project on the old landfill, and it's very advantageous to the city, so.
Excellent. Anything to save a buck, I'm for it. Yes, Secretary Fagan?
Just a quick question. You aren't going to be here on the 15th of March?
But I know the presentation, but as long as you're going to vote.
We're not voting.
Um, I won't be here on March 5th either.
The Ides of March, March 15th, right?
I wasn't planning on killing anybody.
Mr. Fiori can tell us a little bit more about that. Let's go on to Mr. Viera.
Not to, not to be extensible, but is it, are they talking on the buildings or on the grounds? Just to get, not to-
The initial discussion, again, it was just an initial discussion. I haven't seen the presentation. Actually, I did see the presentation, but I believe the initial conversation was regarding roofs. And my immediate concern is preserving the integrity of our roofs, but that's part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Sure, and it will be an open session for questions, of course, so. Great, so we, did we call the vote on that already? Yes, we did, right? Okay, anything further, Secretary Fagan?
No.
Okay, so next up, unfinished business, action items, updates, and our list. So, let's see. Anything on here that we can knock off? Is the Haig and Sahadi Student Activities Audit Corrective Action Plan, should that remain or wait until it gets scheduled to the rules? I say we let it stay.
I agree.
Okay, so let's not even touch that. Anything else on here?
The only thing that I would just comment is that Chairman Viera, who was chairman of the Long Range Planning Committee, we're working on scheduling a date, and the date that we're looking at right now, I believe we said was the 22nd?
Yeah, Wednesday, February 27th.
Wednesday, February 22nd. So just, we'll keep the committee informed. If we do schedule that time, we'll, Mrs. Devine will send out the agenda, and we'll make sure everybody's aware.
Is that what you sent me today?
I can't remember, yeah. Was it 22nd or 23rd? I can't remember.
One of the days, I was like, it was, I only had a real small window.
Yeah. So we're going to try to work around that window, and if we have to push it off, we'll push it off.
All right.
But we do want to try to get that meeting sooner than later, to try to tackle those items.
It was the 23rd.
23rd?
Yeah, it was the 23rd.
Who's on the Subcommittee?
So, so you meant the 22nd?
Who's on there? Stevie, you're on, Mr. Viera, you're on, and Mr. Enos, and who else? Mr. George, all right.
We'll keep the rest of the committee informed.
Yeah, I'd like to be present if possible. Thank you. So now we're off to Item K, Executive Session. A motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Taunton Administrative Association, also known as the TAA, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A-3, and to discuss strategy, to discuss strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to exemption, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A-2, and we, to reconvene in open session.
Motion to go into executive session, executive session, a roll call vote.
And to reconvene in open session. If you add that to your motion, thank you. And second on a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, Secretary Fagan.
Mr. Pawlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Dr. DeMello?
Yes. So we shall return and reconvene in open session. Thank you, everybody.
Motion to come back from executive session and roll call vote.
Is there a second? Mrs. Fagan, Secretary Fagan?
Mr. Pawlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Dr. DeMello?
Yes. And do I have a motion?
Now a motion to record the votes taken in executive session on a roll call vote.
There's a second on the floor. Secretary Fagan, roll call, please.
Mr. Pawlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes. Any other business? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, excuse me. Do we have to abstain if we weren't further on the second roll?
Yeah.
Do two separate ones, right? So that's the first?
Okay, so who wants to lead that motion, please? Mr. Fiori?
I move that we approve the votes with regard to the non-aligned personnel.
Is there a second?
Second.
And do we have any present votes?
Present, okay. So Mr. Pawlowski? You just vote present?
Present.
Okay. Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes present. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night. Thank you.